There we go.
All right, thank you. We'll call the meeting to order on October the 6th, the Planning Commission Meeting. First, order of business, if we can have a roll call, please.
Alderman Boyd, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone.
President.
Commissioner Banton.
President.
Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Pfeffer.
Present.
Commissioner Weber.
Present.
Chair Strather.
Present.
And you do have a quorum of seven.
Thank you very much. With that, just so that the commission know I am online, I just will be off camera most of the evening. First order of business at this point, now that we have a quorum, is the approval of minutes. I'm not sure how many have received the packet, but I also know Michelle sent out the email with the links to all the paper. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the September 1st.
Move. Alderman Cone.
It's been moved by Alderman Cone, seconded by.
David.
Commissioner Weber, call for vote, please.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Mr. Boaz.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley. Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes with our present voting aye.
Thank you. With all the minutes, with the minutes approved, the next order of business, we have four items on the agenda. The first two will be presented by Alexa. The second two items will be presented by Jonathan. And at this point, I'll turn over the microphone or presentation to Alexa. And good evening, Alexa.
Good evening and good evening, planning commissioners. On the agenda this evening, we have a redevelopment plan located in the downtown west neighborhood. And the redevelopment area is located at 1717 Olive Streets, which is also known as the Butler Brothers Building, and also rests on an entire city block encompassing two, just over two acres. The building is currently unoccupied and the prospective developer Gary Prossman of Olive Street Partners plans to renovate the building into 385 apartments, including many amenities such as a fitness center, a yoga studio, office spaces, a rooftop walking track, and even a pool, and also include 16,000 square feet of retail commercial space. Furthermore, the site is in the design downtown plan boundaries. Something to know about the site is that the neighborhood plan calls for various elements to be incorporated such as active street frontages along the building, west on 18th Street, north on Locust Street, and then south on Olive Street. Additionally, the plan, the design downtown plan didn't identify that the Butler Brothers Building itself be renovated into lots in a mixed-use residential area. And lastly, the site is located along a critical boulevard, which is intended to take an oversized street such as Olive, and included as an opportunity to build a connected network of linear parks through central medians and sidewalks. All of these recommendations are included in the redevelopment plan that are in your packets. The site is located in a specialty mixed-use area, which is intended that a unique mix of uses be preserved and developed. Here is a view of the building, of the southwest corner of the Butler Brothers Building orienting northeast. As you can see, it's about eight stories tall. Here's an elevation of one side of the building. You can go to the next slide. So here's a slide of the basically the overall residential floor plan. And you can see that there's a mix of one-bedroom units, two-bedroom, and also studio units. Next slide, please. Here's the east elevation of the Butler Brothers Building. All right. So now we're going to talk about some of the surrounding uses around the subject site. So to the west, we have commercial buildings. And we also have diner, the White Knight, that's sort of at the southwest corner of the Butler Brothers Building. To the north of the side, we have some office space, which is the Merz Goodwill Office. And then. Northeast of the site, we also have more residential units called the Park Left Condos. And to the east, we also have a St. Louis Public Library. South of the building, we also have a mix of uses that are located south on Olive Street, which includes like vacant residential building and office, and also retail uses. We have more residential housing towards the southwest. And you can see this is the surface parking lot and the building kind of in the corner. Okay, so, staff recommends that the area is declared by it and provides that the blinding study and redevelopment plan is in conformance with the SLUPE and also the design downtown neighborhood plan, and recommends approval. We do have Gary Prossman on the line that can answer any questions, and I'm happy to answer them as well.
Thank you, Cecilia. At this moment, I would acknowledge Gary on the line. If he would, I'd give him two minutes to kind of give us anything he wants prior to questions from the, from the commission.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're excited to hopefully have the opportunity to contribute to a major redevelopment downtown. Our track record is such that we've done this throughout the country. We're looking forward to being a part of the community and happy to answer questions. I think she did an excellent job covering the outline of the development that we're proposing.
Thank you, Gary. As we go through the commissioners, no, I go through line by line of the commissioners. The first thing I will acknowledge is this is listed as a fifth ward in Alderman Page. I take it that he has been consulted and has endorsed this project.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Alderman Boyd, are you on? If you are, if you have any questions? Not hearing any Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cone, any questions?
No question. Seems like a very exciting project.
Thank you. Commissioner Banton, any questions?
Just a couple of questions. So I'm curious on how, where is the parking going in this building? You have a one-to-one ratio, right, for parking spaces per unit?
Yes, the, the parking is on the lower levels of the building. There's, there's an existing parking garage in the building. I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity to be, to be in it or not. Yeah, no, it has, it does have existing parking that we're taking advantage of, and we are adding half a level of additional parking to accommodate all parking within the building. We, I will say, we certainly anticipate that particularly for the, the flex use, whether it's commercial, retail, the market will determine, but that the fact that there is street parking will be a benefit as well.
Do you, are you feel confident about a one-to-one parking ratio, or are you, or you think you would be wanting more or less, depending on zoning? That's just curiosity.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a very good question. You know, in an ideal world, you'd have a little more than one-to-one. Having said that, you know, pre-COVID, I think all of us that are in urban development were anticipating there'd be fewer cars, and we would not need even one-to-one in the not-too-distant future. So your guess is as good as mine about what it's going to look like in three or four years from now. But I would have said pre-COVID, an urban project like this with, with many people, you know, would, would opt not to even own a car.
Yep.
But, but one-to-one is what we have. And as I said, there is a fair amount of relief around because the building is so large with the two acres. There are a fair number of surface spaces, you know, street level available, intercity-owned spaces.
Very good. Last, last comment I have, so I know as part of the redevelopment agreement, there's the landscape and sidewalk maintenance to put sort of street trees around the building. And one thing that I've often noticed with downtown projects and street trees is that the street trees get put in, and they, they die because they don't get enough water. So would you be amenable to amending the redevelopment agreement to provide irrigation for street trees as part of the project?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that because I don't know how feasible that is. I just, it would be, I, I can't answer that question here spur of the moment without knowing that's feasible or not. What I can tell you is, you know, with an apartment project, we're going to take care of the trees. I mean, it's the front door. We're not going to have, you know, dead trees.
All right, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boaz, any questions?
No questions from me. It's a good-looking project.
Thank you. Commissioner Peoples, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Pfeffer, any questions? Not hearing Commissioner Pfeffer. I'll come back. Commissioner Weber, any questions?
No question.
With that, thank you. The chair has no questions at this point. I would ask that we review the, the ask of the, of the team, and then we'll take a vote. I'll accept a motion.
So move, I move to accept the recommendation of staff.
Commissioner Boaz, second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Weber, seconded by Commissioner Boaz. Previous roll. Call for previous roll. Do I hear any objections? Hearing no objections, it passes under unanimous vote at that point. Thank you very much, commissioners, for your expedience in that issue. The second issue item on the deck is Alexa, and we'll return it back to you now.
All right. So next, we have a zoning petition for the 3230 Clifton subject site, which is also one parcel just over two and a half acres in the Lindenwood Park neighborhood. The site currently is vacant, and the petitioner wishes to rezone the site from A, single-family, to D, multiple-family dwelling district. Next slide, please. The petitioner, Mr. Tony Rainieri, plans to develop the area into multiple-family housing, which includes 96 residential units, amenities such as a pool, workout area, picnic area, and a clubhouse. Next, please. So the site is located in a neighborhood preservation area, which is intended to preserve existing housing stock and augment the neighborhoods with new infill residential and corner commercial development that is physically integrated within the neighborhood. Next slide. As you can see, the subject site is currently zoned A. However, given the request is to allow for construction of multifamily housing, the D designation can serve as a transitionary zoning designation that provides a nice transition of uses between the single-family homes that are to the west of the site, and also the commercial developments that are to the east of the subject site. Also, this new development will be in consistent use with the multifamily buildings that's on the adjacent property just north of the site. Next slide. Thank you. Here's the site plan. As you can see, the entry will, to the sort of the homes will be from Clifton Avenue, and then the surface parking will be located to the rear of the apartment units. Next slide. Okay, so about north, this is the residential condominiums that are just north of the subject site. And then we also have single-family homes that are kind of located to the northeast. Then we also have a lot of commercial development that's east of the subject site, which is facing Hampton Ave. So we have a gas station, if you could click in. We have fast food retail such as Long John Silver's Burger King. And then also, we have a United States Postal Service office just south of the subject site. Okay. So in summary, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning based on the three objectives that achieved for the zoning administrator, and also finds it to be in conformance with the SLUPE's neighborhood preservation area, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Alexa. With that, I do notice that this is in Ward 23, under Alderman Vicario. I presume he has been, he has been consulted and approves of this project.
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'll begin the questions with the commissioners. I'll first see if Alderman Boyd is on. Alderman Boyd, any questions? Seeing that it's not on, Alderman Cone, any questions?
I, so can you go back a couple of slides, please? With the, I know, before the surrounding areas, I think it was the layout of the site.
Site plan.
It's, the computer is incredibly slow at the moment, so just.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
Yeah, here we go. So.
One too many.
I, I'm just noticing on the aerial photos that come later, there's a, a ton of parking, and I'm not sure if that's part of the site plan, or if that's part of the commercial that's already there. So, because it looks like parking's in the rear along the site plan, but then if you like, fast forward a slide or two. You'll notice there's a bunch of parking right behind the green space. So is that, is that part of the parcel, or, or part of the site plan, or is that separate? And who does that belong to?
So actually, that is a private entrance to the United States Postal Service Office, and that's also not, it's not part of the same parcel.
Okay. So the parking lot for the site plan would basically abut what is essentially a parking lot for the postal service.
Yep.
Slash entryway.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Lots of surface parking, but other than that, no questions or observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cone. Commissioner Banton, any questions?
This is in, what, the Lindenwood Park neighborhood, correct? Is there a, is there a neighborhood plan for that area?
There isn't a neighborhood plan.
Okay. Has the developer and/or in conjunction with the alderperson reached out to residents in that area, do you know?
From what I know of, they have, but I will also let Mr. Rainieri on the line speak to that as well.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to unmute. You would think I'd have this figured out by now, as long as we've been on Zoom. Yeah, we have reached out to the neighborhood. We're trying to kind of finish our plans and elevations to, to give them a final presentation. We have been in contact with them.
Have they expressed any concerns about the project?
Not so far.
Okay. I like, in terms of site plan, that the parking is in the back and that the building is fronting Clifton Avenue. I think that's.
Amen.
A benefit, so appreciate that was you, your architect, who laid it out that way. Other than that, I think it's probably a good use of the site, so no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boaz, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley, are you online? Hearing Commissioner Bradley not online. Commissioner Peoples, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman, are you on the line? Not hearing any questions from Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Pfeffer, any questions from you at this point? Not hearing any questions from Commissioner Pfeffer. Commissioner Weber, any questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber. And at this time, the chairman has no questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
It's Alderman Cone. I, I actually, I don't know if I caught this or not. Is there a breakdown of the mix of units? Are they all one-bedroom, or is there, it looks like there's different floor plans? So I'm just curious what the, what the different units, the like, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, or more? Is there a breakdown of that?
There's eighty-four one-bedrooms and twelve two-bedroom units.
Okay. So there are just one- and two-bedroom units? There's no like, three- or four-bedroom?
No, sir.
Okay. And then what's the orange space that's on the?
That's a, I'm sorry, that's a clubhouse. That's an amenity space.
Okay. And I presume the blue is a pool?
That's correct. Yeah, you got it.
All right. Okay, awesome. Sounds exciting.
Thank you.
And thank, thank you. To follow Commissioner Cohen's question, can you give the square footage on the one-bedroom square footage of the twos, and what your market price is per square foot?
The one-bedrooms, they average about 650 square feet a piece. The two-bedrooms average about 950 square feet a piece. And the one-bedrooms will rent for about a thousand, and the two-bedrooms will rent for about thirteen hundred.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain, if Alexa, if you would recap the ask of the commission, please.
Of course. And summary, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning based off the three objectives that are achieved for the zoning administrator. And we also, staff finds that that is in conformance with the SLUPE's neighborhood preservation area, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain any motion from the commissioner at this time?
I move that we pass the zoning amendment before us.
It's been moved by, by Alderman Cone, seconded by Commissioner Weber. Call for vote.
Previous roll.
Call for previous roll. Do I hear any objections? No objections heard. It does pass with previous roll. Thank you very much, commissioners, once again for you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go on.
It's done. I'd just like to ask the developer, Mr. Rainieri, a question. Historically, there's been some issues that are lingering environmental issue with this property. Is that still the case? And have you somehow mitigated it?
Yeah, we, we haven't discovered any environmental issues yet. We, so just, just to be clear, I, I live seven blocks to the west of this. So I live in Lindenwood Park neighborhood. I actually live on Scanlon, which is the street that runs along the north side of this development. So I'd heard all the same rumors about various things. And so we, we engage in environmental consulting firm. They've done some borings. We also engage a geotechnical firm. They've done some borings as well to test the PSI of the soil and haven't discovered any major issues at all.
Good find versus the rumors. Good.
Yeah, understood.
Great, thanks, Don, at that point. Thank you, Tony, for responding to that. The next side, next two items will be presented by Jonathan, 27-21 R I Z. Jonathan, welcome and good afternoon. And it is in your hands at this point.
Good evening, Chair Schraller, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jonathan Roper. I am a senior planner here with the City of St. Louis's Planning and Urban Design Agency. And I will present to you, the first petition is for a rezoning in the greater Ville area. This petition, which is proposed by Alva Bost with the Perpetual Care, she is proposing to rezone four parcels of about 0.7 acres and area. And she would like to rezone those parcels from C, the multifamily dwelling district, and, which are, is currently operating in adult daycare, and the other parcels, which are Zone F, neighborhood commercial, which are currently vacant, to the D, multifamily dwelling district, which allows for a residential facility to be built per veterans. Slide, please. The strategic land use plan designates this area as neighborhood development, which would allow for residential construction and residential services. Next slide, please. The current site is C, multifamily dwelling district, and F, neighborhood commercial district. As you can see on the screen, the, the pink on the screen, which is currently zoned neighborhood commercial, those are all vacant as well. And we seek to rezone this as D, multifamily. Next slide, here's the subject aerial of the site, where, in yellow, the highlight, where you can see on the corner of the property, the existing adult daycare, and the rest of the site remains vacant. Slide, please. Here is the proposed site plan, where you could see on the corner at St. Ferdinand and Norsera, the building that creates almost an L shape, L style at the corner, and in the hatched area to the right, bottom right, is the existing adult daycare. Here is a rendering of the drawing. So this would be, if you're looking straight at it, it's like if you're standing at the corner of Sarah and St. Ferdinand. It's a one-story building that will have, proposed to have twenty units for veterans. Slide, please. And next, we're going to look at the site and take a quick tour of what's surrounding the site, starting with the, oh, go ahead, back one, sorry. Starting with the subject site, where you can see this is looking west to east at the existing adult daycare, and you can see the remainder of the parcels are vacant. The southwest of the site, where there's an existing church, and you can barely see the existing daycare just down the street there. Next slide. This is to the northwest of the site, where we have a few recently rehabbed mixed-use properties near the site. Next slide. This is to the immediate north, where we have residential units here. Slide. To the northeast of the site, there's recently constructed residential units just down the street on St. Ferdinand. Next slide. Southeast, we have existing residential. Slide. And to the south of the site, there's a little bit of vacancy, but also different commercial properties as well. Right. We received a letter from the zoning administrator, which noted that the proposed rezoning of the site would create additional services and housing opportunities for a vulnerable population. Those would be the veterans. And also, in rezoning a site, it would bring the property into conformity with its intended future use. Also, we know that the proposed rezoning is in conformity with the strategic land use plans, neighborhood development area, which allows for residential services and residential residences. And PDA staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning. And I'm here to answer any questions or comments the commission may have, and the petitioner is on as well.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that right now, Jonathan. First off, I'm always glad to see anything doing with veterans, especially having been with the Veterans Community Project groundbreaking last month. The first thing we'll do, and I'll, this is in Ward Four, under Alderwoman Evans. I presume that she has authorized or approved or been in support of this request, and I'll entertain questions for commissioners. Commissioner Cohen, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Banton, any questions?
Yeah, can you please, yes, could you please go back to the site plan?
It's going as fast as we can.
Yeah, no, no rush.
Might be a good moment just to remind everyone that we will probably lose our quorum at 6:30. Just as a heads up.
Great, thanks. So I'm assuming this is a population that generally doesn't have cars or drives, but I'm not seeing any parking associated with this development. Where, where is staff going to park? Where, what's, what's going on with that?
Let, I'll ask the petitioner if she could comment on that. Just quickly, to my understanding, that the population actually being served, you would be generally correct on the low parking count for them. But as far as the employees, I would rather have the petitioner mention.
Yes, I will be glad to answer that question. We have a fair number of off-street parking.
Real quick, can you identify yourself, please, who you're with?
I'm sorry, I am Alva Bost with Perpetual Care. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We have a.
Continue.
We have a fair number of off-street parking, where our employees are able to park right now, and they will still have enough parking, you know, for future endeavors. And we also will still have room on the back to, you know, if need be, to put parking, you know, on the back area as well.
How many employees do you anticipate working in this facility?
Well, the number of employees that we will have to have will be six.
Okay. Okay, that was my, my only question, but I would assume that six, there is probably six street parking spaces there. So no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boaz.
No questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Boaz. Commissioner Peoples.
No questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Pfeffer. Not hearing any questions from Commissioner Pfeffer. Commissioner Weber.
Yes. Could you clarify for me, what happens to the?
What happens to the adult daycare, those two buildings? Are they being demolished?
Um, no, um, no, sir. They will still be in existence.
So the adult daycare business will continue?
Yes, sir.
And where do those employees park?
Um, as I stated before, we have a fair number of parking. We have the whole block unlocked. Um, north of North Market, there are no homes there and also, you know, the entire space on the front area as well.
Okay, is there um, I'm I'm having a hard time understanding the site plan. I'm not an architect. But is there green space that are space that where you could do off street parking? And make it part of the development?
Is there green space where we can do?
Is, let me start over. Is there space on the parcel of land to create off street parking?
On the back, I can say we could possibly get um, ten cars back there.
Do you think that would be a good use of the property?
Um, actually, I was thinking more so that we can incorporate that into our group activities. Like when we go outside and, you know, have group activity time.
Okay, I I'm I'm not familiar with the area, but. My fear is that five years from now, there'll be more development and there just won't be enough parking around there.
Even if it is, we, you know, as I stated before, we have the whole block, so I'm not seeing what you are seeing. Um, you know, the street, we have one end to the other one, you know, the. The one facility where we're operating now, um, we can probably get about ten cars here, ten or more, so.
Okay, my next question is, could could you show me the slide of the proposed building? And does it show where the existing daycare building remains?
Go over to, uh, we will show you the slide. However, we cropped out the existing adult daycare, so it's uh, partially visible. At this slide, so we're going to it right now, but you, we did crop out. So on the right side, um, where the roofs are not angled, there is the existing building and we did. I apologize, we did crop it out because we wanted to focus it on.
So will that building, so is the new building gonna look like the old building? Or is the old building gonna look like the new building? Or is the old building just gonna stick out like a sore thumb?
Uh, they're gonna have some similarities.
Also, that was one of the items in a rezoning. We looked at what the use would be rather than an architectural review. Because that would be in our purview for a rezoning. Um, because as we look at the activities of the land rather than your architectural uh, components of it.
Okay, um, you know, I'm in favor of it. Looks good. I like to help veterans, but I do have. Is that a circle drive in front?
Yes.
Okay, but I do have, as Alderman Biden brought up, I I am concerned about parking. And if they can get off street parking into the development, I would be in favor of that. However, I am in favor of the project.
You would make sure under the zoning code how um, parking would be when it comes to. Once if this were to be rezoned, uh, zoning would usually handle the parking uh, counts that are required.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weber. Uh, as a chair, I would like to ask, can you tell us about the demographics of the veterans that you're serving? Is this is this overnight stay? Is this daycare? Can you give us a little bit more about who you're serving?
Uh, well, actually, it it will be overnight, you know, like a residential facility. Uh, we're basically uh. Perpetual care is is for veterans who who don't have a support person who can who can monitor supervisor. Or help with their daily activities of living such as bathing, dressing and and meal preps. We will focus on the veterans who do not need to be placed in a hospital or nursing home. But those who cannot live alone because of medical constraints.
Hey, because the word transitional implies to me that you're using and developing them for their own care. Uh, which is not really what it sounds like. It seems like long, long term care.
Yes, 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 sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, with that, I would accept, uh, I would entertain if the. Uh, Jonathan, if you would give us a recommended recommended action for the commission.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the recommendation of the motion is that staff has found that the. This, just give me one quick second. Staff finds that the zoning administrator agrees that this creates additional opportunities for residential services for vulnerable populations. The property into its future intended use. Uh, staff finds that the strategic land use. Is in the proposed rezoning is in conformity with the strategic land use and PDA staff recommends approval of. The proposed rezoning.
Mr. Chair, could I ask another question before you?
Yes, please, Commissioner Weber. Yes.
Thank you. Is this independent living? So each person has their own room with a private bathroom? Is is that what the facility does? I'm I'm having a hard time. After uh, the chair asked that question, I'm having a hard time understanding what the use is gonna be.
Each person will have their own room, of course, but they will share a common area. As far as the bathrooms are concerned, they would share showers and it's, there will be like seven showers in bathrooms for. For for them to share.
Okay, and so do they have to pay rent to be there?
Yes.
Okay, and they'll have twenty four hours here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this point, I would entertain any motion or action by the commission.
Move to approve the rezoning request.
Second, Commissioner Boas.
I have a move from Commissioner Banter, second by Commissioner Boas. Call for vote, please.
Previous role.
Call here, here a call for previous role. Any objections? Hearing no objections to previous role at that point, this this uh, issue does pass with full vote of the commission. Uh, with that, the next item is for.
If you don't mind, I just wanna chime in for a hot second and and let you guys know that the site is actually in the Villa Historic District. Um, so you know that the building permits and all of that will be reviewed by the Cultural Resources Office against those standards.
Thank you very much, and I think that's a very supportive and and valuable information. Uh, with that, Jonathan, if you would, uh, the next item, if I may, I would like to pass a gavel on Commissioner. Uh, Boy as his chair because I am under a time limit and I don't want to transition during the motion. So can I pass a gavel to Commissioner Boas as acting chair for the next item, please?
With the gracious support of the planning staff.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chair and also Acting Chair, uh, Boas. Uh, the next petition that we have for you is for proposed street renaming. The proposed street renaming, uh, the petition was submitted by Washington University. And it's for the renaming of Children's Place, a public street located in the central western neighborhood. The uh, entire length of the street is zero point seventeen miles long. That extends between uh, Taylor Avenue on the east side, Euclid Avenue on the west side. And the access on to and off and exiting the street is um, only from Taylor Avenue on the east. And the process for renaming a street is as follows. Um, a petition is filed to PDA by at least. Uh, a petition by an owner of a parcel affronting a street, also with the signatures of at least fifty one percent of the uh. Of the parcels, the owners of the parcels affronting the street as well as by the older person. And staff did receive the letter from um, seventeenth Ward Alderman, uh, Sweet Sweet T Tina Phil on this as well. He, once PDA uh, receives the applicant, the petition. We then submit and forward this on to the Board of Aldermen. Uh, the Board of Public Service and the Postmaster for the City of St. Louis. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the Board of Public Service and the Postmaster will then provide recommendations to PDA regarding. The proposed street renaming. The petition is then introduced and um, considered by the Planning Commission. And if approved, that it goes on to the Board of Aldermen. Next slide please. And here's a general map of the area. Us, we will note there are two existing segments of Children's Place. A public portion, which is under your consideration for this evening and a private portion, which is just to the west. That's disconnected from the street. So just a brief history of this, there once was a street. Um, called Children's Place that provided access from King's Highway on the west end to uh, Taylor Avenue on the east end. Um, the, and the middle street being Euclid Avenue. The um, portion between Euclid to King's Highway was vacated years ago, um, as the medical campus uh, developed. And now Children's Place on the west side, uh, where it says vacant, it still remains as the main entrance to St. Louis Children's Hospital. While on the east side from Taylor, uh, Children's Place just provides access to uh, Washington University School of Medicine. B J C Healthcare and the University of Health and Sciences and also the uh, metro uh, transit stop. Excellent, please. And here's the subject site aerial of it where you can see it highlighted in yellow, the uh, Children's Place is under the proposed to be renamed. You can see Taylor Avenue and where Euclid Avenue is where uh, there's no access going there. Next slide please. And now we're gonna take you to the site and just look at a few of the um, surrounding, what's surrounding the site. And this is the subject street, uh, Children's Place looking west. So I please. Here is the end of children, the public portion of Children's Place where there's a roundabout and there's no vehicular access. So that roundabout takes you right back to Taylor. Slide. This is where the Children's Place, the private side where um, the hospital where it ends. And as you can see, there's no vehicular access. This is at the intersection of Taylor and Children's Place where uh, if you take a right at that stop sign, you enter Children's Place. And this is looking at the same intersection from the south side of it, where if you take a left hand turn there, you enter Children's Place. Excellent. Part of the petition that's required are the property signatures for at least fifty one percent of the property owners fronting uh, the street to be renamed. In this case, um, there of the five parcels, there were only three property owners being B J C Healthcare, University of Health. And Washington University School of Medicine, all which have signed a petition. Also in the petition, there are different uh, statements to be made such as um, the petitioner needs to know why. Uh, the proposed street name significance and also what the existing street name uh, significance are. Excellent, please. And going through the criteria uh, that staff looks at in the street renaming process. Uh, they, we look at if it's conducive to good city planning, that it conserves the property values of the adjoining property owners. And a general interest to the city of St. Louis. And what was submitted to us and we found was that. Um, as Children's Place used to extend and be the main. Um, access point for St. Louis Children's Hospital, this is no longer the case today. Where if you're entering Children's Place from Taylor, you do not have access to that hospital. And thus you would have to uh, turn around and then go all the way around to King's Highway to get there. So at this point. Um, the access is not through. Also, um. In place, the private portion um, still continues to uh, be the main segment for St. Louis Children's Hospital. So this would lessen that confusion. Uh, next slide please. The name, uh, the proposed name, which is Nashway, um, has um, some cultural or hair heritage. Uh, significance to the city estate. Uh, we find that Nashway is being uh, named after Dr. Helen Nash. Uh, she has had a brilliant fifty year career here in St. Louis in the medical community. She started. Omar G. Phillips Hospital. And then she was appointed to the, she was one of the first African Americans appointed to. Uh, become a physician. To the attending St. Louis Children's Hospital. She was also one of the first four African American physicians on clinical faculty. Uh, staff at Washington University School of Medicine. And she's also um, had many leading um, efforts when it comes to. Prenatal, I'm sorry, not prenatal care, um, pediatric care. And she was also the former dean of minority affairs at Washington University. School of Medicine. Slide please. We wanna make sure that the, in proposing a new street renaming, it does not take away from the heritage or the history of the. Street it would replace. And this particular case, uh, the name is Children's Place, which is very significant. Uh, Children's Place is named after uh, the state's largest pediatric hospital in the, in the state of Missouri. However, as the street was vacated and the medical community has uh, evolved over time. Where there's a big public plaza there and there's no access to the eastern public portion of Children's Place. Um, the significance of Children's Place to the hospital still remains. Next slide please. I'm gonna make sure that the street that could be renamed is consistent um, all the way through on the street. So it's not that you have, uh, for example, grand and in the middle of grand, you add a new street name. Uh, we wanna make sure that the whole street um, is, should be the same, uh, name the same. So in this case, Children's Place is literally one zero point seventeen miles long. And the entire piece, the public portion of Children's Place is to be renamed. Also, I just wanted to note that the private drive access, so the Children's Place to Children's Hospital will not be. Uh, impacted in any way from this. Next slide. And after a person that uh, the petition should not be filed until these first and after the first anniversary of their death. And Dr. Helen Nash sadly passed away in twenty twelve, uh, which would meet the one year requirement. Also, we wanna make sure that um, the street is not. Is there is no duplication of the street name within the metropolitan area. And that's why we do send it over to uh, the postmaster as well. And we did receive comments, but uh, no comments that this was a duplication of that effort in the metropolitan area. Um, in summary, staff finds that they propose um, street renaming meets the criteria for uh, proposed street names. Staff has received comments from both uh, B P S and the postmaster, which both um, recommend approval. And staff recommends approval of the petition as submitted, uh, which will then go to the Board of Aldermen, um, upon your recommendation. With that, I'm here to answer any questions or comments and the petitioner is on the line at this point.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to make any comments?
Um, I I would be happy to. Uh, my name is Robert Blaine. Um, I'm the Assistant Vice Chancellor for Medical Public Policy at the university. Uh, just delighted to see uh, this proposal before the planning commission tonight. Um, Jonathan did an excellent job explaining, you know, the rationale for the proposal and specifically the importance that Dr. Nash. Um, has to our medical school community as well as to the children and families that she served as a physician for forty five years here in St. Louis. And so happy to answer any questions, but again, just wanna thank the planning commission for considering this proposal tonight.
Thank you. Um, should we start with with um, Alderman Cohen for first questions?
Yeah, I thank you. I I certainly think it's admirable to uh, honor those that have served our community so. Awesomely, um, you know, I I personally, I. I, I wish that the, since we have a representative from the medical center here, you know, I, I really wish that you all would take a look at reopening some of the street grid. So I, I was kind of coming into this with a greater hope that we would be restoring some of the grid over in the, the medical center area. But, you know, certainly a very worthwhile discussion in terms of honoring Dr. Nash. You know, and, and I guess, related to that, we would only be renaming the section that's between Euclid and Taylor. So the section of Children's Place that is private would remain Children's Place that's off of King's Highway. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, I, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benton?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Bradley? With this, Commissioner Peoples?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodman? Sorry, Commissioner Pfeffer? Commissioner Weber?
No questions, Assistant Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Chair Strather?
My simple statement is Dr. Nash was my pediatric doctor, so I am very glad to see that they are being honored at this point. Thank you, Acting Chair.
Excellent. Thank you.
I believe we also have Alderman Boyd on the line now.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Boyd?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited to hear that this renaming will be after Dr. Nash. Dr. Nash was my son's pediatrician, so I certainly support this. A legend in the St. Louis community. And kudos whoever thought about naming it after Dr. Nash.
All right, could I have a motion?
I a second.
Okay, we have a, a motion from
I think Commissioner Weber, and then a second by from Alderman Cohen.
Thank you. And we cannot do previous roll, so
Correct.
Did you call the roll?
Alderman Boyd?
Hi.
Alderman Cohen?
Hi.
Commissioner Banton?
Hi.
Acting Chair Boas?
Hi.
Commissioner Peoples? Hi. Commissioner Pfeffer?
Hi.
Commissioner Weber?
Hi.
Chair Strather?
Hi.
And the motion passes with our present voting, aye.
Thank you.
And Madam Acting Chair, I'd just like to make one comment. The descendants of Dr. Nash still maintain a pediatric office on North King's Highway in North City.
Excellent.
All right.
And I am so sorry, I cannot manage multiple windows. Our next agenda item.
We actually don't have any other further agenda items. A couple of delegated items were in your agenda. But I think we are, we can close the meeting.
Well, I move to adjourn then.
So move. I did second.
All right, great. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.
Good night.